Call the meeting to order, please take a roll.
Harrington.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Pollak.
Here.
Smith. Wesson.
Here.
The agenda is before you, there are no additions or deletions, so a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, any item on there that you want to talk about first before we do an action? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now's the time for public comment from individuals in the audience who may wish to talk to us about something that's on their mind, that's not on the agenda. Okay, go. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with update on Rancho Way Phase 5. So we're into day 30 of the 77 days allotted for the phase foreclosure, so it's been about a month. And they've had great weather, so, and they are making some pretty good progress. There have been no changes to the closures and traffic control routes since the last meeting. Work in the full roadway closure section is ongoing with storm sewer retaining walls and the tunnel installation. The majority of the PED tunnel boxes have been set in place over the last few days, and now they're working on the vertical portions of the concrete retaining walls, which will start to be poured this week. As I mentioned, they've used 30 of their allowable 77 calendar days for the full roadway closure, and that duration is provided to get the roadway repaved and opened to vehicle traffic. There will be other work along the sides of the roadway after it is opened. The closure includes incentive and disincentive for early completion and late completion of $2,000 per day with a cap of $40,000 for incentive. They're also working on Phase 3, which is the west half of Rancho Way, storm sewer intakes, and then they'll follow that with grading, sub drains, and placing rock. The west half of Westwood intersection remains closed, they're getting really close, they've got all the concrete poured now, and they should have started on the pavers today, I believe. And they've used 14 of their allowed 21 days on that so far, so it looks really good on that one, too. I think that's about it for Rancho Way Phase 5. Centennial Park Loop Road project, they have almost completed all the grading work. And placement of the rock base has started along the alignment. We did encounter some porous soils, and there will be a change order probably at the next meeting or the following meeting for that. We had them over excavate some porous soils and recompact with some good material. They intend to start paving early to mid-October, which is good, and I think they'll meet their goal of having it paved this fall. And then lastly, just a quick update on the Forever Green Road Trail. We had the pre-construction meeting quite a while ago, and they've always planned on starting October 11th, and we've been talking to them lately, and that is still the date. So they should start about October 11th, and they're planning to be completed by November 1st. That would be about a month of their contract completion date. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Kevin. Annie.
Kevin, one minor one, I didn't think of it till now, with the paving, the loop road of Centennial Park, do you know how long that's supposed to take to do it?
The actual paving, probably a couple days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just people are, every time I'm out there, they're excited about that loop being paved.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Yeah, I always ask when I'm.
Some of the neighbors aren't.
So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin. Okay, Ryan.
Okay, a couple things for me tonight. First, an update on our outreach and equity coordinator position. This is the position that will be in the community center, that'll be in the communications department. We had really good turnout, 63 applications, which we were happy to see. So we have a staff team exploring those this week, and we're hoping to do interviews next week. And then we'll have another team conducting those interviews, and then if all goes well, this position will start on or shortly after November 1st, so coming right up. Looking forward to getting that position up and running. And then the only other thing I had in my update tonight, I wanted to call your attention to the memo in the council packet, and I have a short statement I'm going to read on that. But, and this is related to the fiscal year 22 tax rate. And in August of this year, our team realized that the certified tax levy for fiscal year 2022, which started on July 1, was 19 cents more than what we discussed and agreed upon in the budget work session earlier in the year with the city council. Instead of 1132 per thousand in value, that rate was 1151. When the error was found, staff consulted with state and county, state and the county about potential remedies, but learned that a correction in the current fiscal year would be nearly impossible and impractical. This error will result in the collection of $234,000 in property taxes, equivalent to $1.97 per month for the owner of a median home value in North Liberty, which is approximately $221,000. While this error cannot be corrected in FY '22, it can be made up for in FY '23 by using that additional $234,000 collected in FY '22 to buy down the tax rate in FY '23. As the person charged with presenting a budget to the city council, I take full responsibility for not catching this error sooner in the process. Further, I want to ensure our residents, city council, and staff that our team will be implementing new steps into our budget process to ensure this does not happen again. And finally, I want to apologize to our residents, city council, and staff for the error, and I commit to doing better in the future. For a full explanation of how this error occurred and the steps city staff will take to ensure it does not happen again, I would direct folks to the memo included in this week's council packet. And additionally, that memo will be posted on the city's budget webpage, which is a webpage we're required to have by the state. With that, I'd take any questions on that or on any other topic or what I reported on tonight.
Any questions?
So I just have one thing.
Sure.
So I understand, you know, that we're not the financial experts, but we also share some of that responsibility that we weren't able to kind of figure that out on our own a little bit. So I will try and check my math a little bit harder next time. So just, you know, want to make sure that we understand that things happen, and we just move along, move on from them, learn from them and move on, so.
Well said. Anything else for Ryan? Okay, Mayor report. Couple proclamations. First one is Careers in Construction Month. Whereas Careers in Construction Month is an annual month designated to help increase public awareness of the opportunities available in construction trades professions. Whereas during the month, employees, employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in construction. Whereas the construction industry is one of our nation's four largest industries, employing more than 7.4 million individuals in the United States. Whereas we are pleased to honor construction trades, professionals, and the critical role they play in the development in North Liberty. Whereas through a collaborative effort that reaches policymakers as well as local education and high schools, our goal is to effectively address some of the issues that have contributed to chronic labor shortages and misperceptions of careers in construction, to develop a skilled workforce for the future. Whereas the National Association of Home Builders, student chapters programs, is dedicated to enriching the educational expertise of students by offering them firsthand exposure to the real world of the building industry through NAHB membership, education planning, and networking opportunities. Now therefore, I Terry Donahue, along with the city council, hereby proclaim October 2021 as Careers in Construction Month. Second one we have is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. And whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists in a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported. And whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and within intimate relationships. And whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked in violence intimate relationships for more than 40 years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health, and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. And whereas our community's achievements should be commended, we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we in North Liberty City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Mr. Mayor, we do have representatives from both regarding both of these proclamations here.
Please. Really glad to have you.
Thank you, guys. Adam Hawn from the Watts Group and the Iowa City Home Builder Association, we want to thank you guys for recognizing October for Careers in Construction Month. As the pandemic showed us, and we already knew, there was a shortage of construction workers, and they're deemed essential workers, so we continued to work through the pandemic, whether it be infrastructure, homes, or commercial properties. And we really need everybody's help to recruit our next generation of workers, as a lot of our workers are aging out, and we already were at a shortage. So we appreciate you guys helping us raise awareness about the shortage and the quality of jobs that are out there in construction and that they are well-paying, so thank you.
You bet. Well, thank you.
I have a two and a five-year-old that'll join your team, Adam. That's right.
There are OSHA rules, I think, I guess.
Please come up. Sure.
Thank you so much for honoring Domestic Violence Awareness Month this October, and thank you so much for your continued support. One thing I'd just like to note on there, I have some stats on there, but in North Liberty, we did double the victims that we helped last year, from 91 to 185. And that was mostly due to word of mouth of our services and your support in our community, so we just want to thank you so much for that. We do have events going on this month, we have one in-person event on October 23rd. It's our largest in-kind donation drive of the year, and North Liberty Hy-Vee and Fairway will be helping us out, allowing us to ask people as they come in and shop for items that they would buy something off of our top needs list donated on their way out. So it's pretty easy, slick, and a supplies or shelter for nine months of the year. So, yeah, thank you so much, and let me know if you have any questions.
And will somebody from the VIP be talking to us before too long about their building plans?
Yes, we will.
Appreciate them talking to all of our council members, that's.
Yeah, thank you, yes, thank you so much to all of you for meeting with us, yeah. Yep, but yeah, we're just starting the phases of getting our committee together for that and making some of the requests now, so, yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is your shopping list online yet?
Yeah, so we'll have it on our website, and then our Facebook and all that stuff. But we're going to create a QR code, too, at each of the locations that you can just snap with your phone and easily do it that way. But usually, you know, always hygiene products, always non-piercible food, diapers, infant items, those are our largest needs, but yeah, thank you for asking. But yeah, it's 9:30 to 1:38, 9 to 1:30, I don't know. We kind of changed it up this year on October 23rd, so a Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item that I have was honor roll nominations. I'd like to thank the communications department, especially Jillian, who really worked with this to try to make it a go again. And basically, as you may have seen on Facebook today, winners were announced. Ashley Vermau was the persons above 18. Got it. And then Graham Beckman and Graham Thompson, stepbrothers who did the walk for the pantry, they're being awarded a co-prize on that one. We'll be working to do presentations with the council in the near future, so. Also, that we had great turnout as far as nominations are concerned, and just let me, you know, go through the persons who are on the honor roll. Thad Abrams, Eva Anderson, I butcher this name every time, Edo Ramain Beila, Cindy Blackley, Miguel Cullen, Candy Evans, Barbara James, Harper Klein, Lacey Annette Lauer, Diane McGraw, Bobby Newman, Julie Roskem, Dean, and Linda Westergaard. We certainly thank them one and all for doing something for this community, and just shows that we have really great people here. And thank the people who do the nominations, very important, too. Next item, tomorrow, going to be a busy day. I have an all-day conference with the East Central Iowa Council of Governments, and they're envisioning East Central Iowa. This will be a visioning session for the corridor in the area, and we're supposed to meet at Kirkwood, but because of COVID, everything has to be on Zoom. So let's you know how that turns out. If anybody here was also going to participate, I hope you did, or made that you were. Okay, I will give you a report when we get done. Last item is tomorrow evening, 7:30, virtual forum. As I understand, it's being done three ways. Zoom, which takes preregistration, live stream in LTV, and the Johnson County League of Women Voters Facebook page. So if you have an opportunity to tune in, please do so. It's a little earlier, it seems like, than usual, but, you know, I'm glad that they're still doing it. Any other questions? Okay, reimbursement resolution, resolution number 2021-93. A resolution relating to the financing of certain proposed projects to be undertaken by the city of North Liberty, Iowa, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. With this resolution, what are we doing?
We are adding two projects to the list of projects that are eligible to be borrowed for in the future, should we need that ability. Those are the Dubuque Street project for a maximum of $3 million, and the Off-Road Brush Fire Truck for $270,000 max. This just gets us all right with the IRS as far as borrowing going forward.
Okay. I've read the resolution, anyone wish to establish it?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Pollak.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Item 10, resolution number 2021-94. This is a resolution approving the Stormwater Management Facility Maintenance Agreement and easement between the City of North Liberty and Harvest Investments LLC that establishes the terms and conditions under which stormwater management facilities will be maintained for vintage estates planned area development in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
With these agreements, you guys sit down with the HOA, and is that how this is developed?
Not exactly, Counselor. So these three agreements were conditions that were exacted by the city for the original rezoning and approval of the site plan for the vintage estates development area. With a subdivision, we have developers' agreements, and for, we don't have those for site plans for stuff like this. And so this is the means by which the city makes sure that we have access for emergency vehicles. This particular resolution is for stormwater management. The next two are related, allowing, ensuring we allow, we have the necessary access that we need. We have this for all PADs. This was agreed to by the developer ages ago, and we just now received our signed documents. And so now that we need a resolution to accept them, that's business as usual. A little unusual in the lag time for this, and not sure why that happened, probably. But they're here, and we staff our hands approval, that's.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tracy, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Pollak.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. They have six homes under construction now, I think, so, but they're starting to move. Resolution number 2021-95. A resolution approving the Public Access and Utility Inspection Agreement between the City of North Liberty and Harvest Investments LLC that establishes the terms and conditions under which public access will be maintained and city services authorized for vintage estates planned area development in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions on this one? Tracy, please.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Pollak.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Resolution number 2021-96. A resolution accepting the warranty deed from Harvest Investments LLC to the city of North Liberty for the establishment of right-of-way. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions on this one? Tracy, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Pollak.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Next item on our agenda is SIPCO agreement. Resolution number 2021-97. A resolution approving the electric facilities construction and payment agreement regarding construction of a new transmission line between SIPCO and the City of North Liberty and the City of, yeah, City of Tiffin. Want to tell them what we're doing?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So this is related to the Jasper Road, Forever Green Road, Old Park Road intersection. We've talked previously about a future roundabout in that area. Well, SIPCO had been planning for a significant transmission line that would run north and south from Hills up to Swan Lake area. And two of their poles would conflict with the future roundabout. And so after several meetings with them, we agreed pending council approval that we would share in the cost for redesign to get those out of the way. The challenge is they weren't planned for the right-of-way. If they were planned for the right-of-way, we could have said, need to move them. They had went and obtained easements already, and so that's the challenge here. And so if we don't pay the up to $40,000 now to condemn and move them later, could be closer to a half a million dollars. So it makes sense to split that cost now with Tiffin, which is what these two agreements are proposing to do. The first one is laying out what SIPCO is going to do, the second one is the 2080 with the City of Tiffin.
So it's buried a pig now, then day later. So the resolution has been read. Is there a motion to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
When does, oh.
Please.
When does Tiffin discuss us?
Next week.
Next week, okay. Similar proposal, though, I'm.
Literally identical.
That's what I would have thought.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Can you explain the map to us a little bit more?
Yeah.
Exhibit A?
So exhibit A is going to have a rendition for the approximate location of SIPCO's poles on the first page. And the request from the cities was that the two poles. the, the two poles that you see, their numbers listed twice, and I'll scroll to it as soon as I can find it here, are going to be moved south, and, and I believe to the east. And so the second page of Exhibit A is a, is a closer. So Pole one-eighty-seven moves to the east, Pole one-eighty-six moves further south.
Gotcha. So they're going right across that roundabout then?
Yes. And then there's a, a greater detail on another exhibit here, if I can find it.
Yeah, the next page.
Uh, thank you. It's not wanting to cooperate with me. That will, there we are. Will give you an idea of where the relocated pole will be with respect to Tiffin's planned condemnation of that intersection, and then separately for the future roundabout that's contemplated that would involve all three cities to be getting involved in that. But that's, I believe, from the M P O. I don't, nothing obviously has been, has been finalized with that, but that's, that's the concept that's been discussed. So, is that, is that responsive to your question?
Yeah, so the, the two numbers was what I was looking for there. You know, which one was, is there a final version, or if it's just a pick from the two? But it looks like what I'm hearing you say, the second diagram that we have with the roundabout in it is what they're going to do with those power lines.
I mean, with, yes, within, within a couple feet in any direction.
That's the goal. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chris, did you have concerns then with the location of those? Or you're just verifying the location?
Yeah. I, I'm, that's above my pay grade to say where they would be best located. So it seems odd to just throw them right across a roundabout ultimately, but they have to cross the street once or twice someplace there.
Yeah, we, we had actually a number of discussions early on with them, and there's some property, there's some challenges with the property to the north, and they just weren't, weren't able to secure easements up that way. And so we aren't excited about it going over the roundabout either. But it's, it was, it was basically that, or, or not, and keep it where it was.
The lesser of two bad options.
Yes.
Yeah, we weren't excited about the other options either. Yeah.
And the, the, something to note is it will be, you know, the lines will be in the air thirty to thirty-five feet. So hopefully, obviously, they're going to be somewhat noticeable, but hopefully, as you get closer, you won't be able to see the lines.
Yeah. I can live with it.
Ready to vote? Tracy?
Wesson.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative and unopposed, one absent. The second resolution is 2021-98. Resolution approving the twenty-eight E agreement between the City of North Liberty and the City of Tiffin for cost obligations for the design and relocation of Central Iowa Power Cooperative Transmission Line. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded.
I moved first. Yes.
I heard a couple of grunts in the end.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this?
Just how have our conversations been with Tiffin on this?
Good. Yeah, we have a good relationship with both our neighboring cities, all of our neighboring cities.
Thank you for that.
And they, they, there's, obviously, there's some other legal issues, not between us, but between a couple of the other cities that they'll have to work through. But we continue to work well with their neighbors.
The thing was, we had come to the conclusion, we have to do and go ahead and move on this thing fairly soon with the potential of development that the developer company is moving on now. So, okay, ready to take the roll?
Pollock.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative and unopposed, one absent. Snowmobile ordinance. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the use of snowmobiles in city limits. Where we at on this, as far as what are we doing and not doing as compared before?
So the current ordinance identifies a number of routes, approved snowmobile routes within, within the city. For those of you that have been on council for a while, you might remember, we had some discussions a number of years ago, talking about eliminating routes. We ended up reducing some in discussions with the snowmobile club at that time. Given the, what we're investing in landscaping and other above-ground utilities, and we had an accident this winter that fortunately no one was injured, but it was fairly costly to the city. Our team is recommending that we eliminate all snowmobile routes within the city. And so that would mean that they would only be prescribed by state code. And I played lawyer already a couple times tonight, so jump in here if I'm wrong.
You're doing great.
Okay. To, to use streets to get out of the city after a fresh snow before the streets are plowed. So that's all, all, all approved routes then would, would go away. That's what this ordinance is proposing. If, maybe I'll just take it one step further. And I, I mentioned in an email that we've had a couple conversations with, with the snowmobile club, and, and they have been great partners over the years. They continue to be great partners. They're, they, they would like to see one route connect from Ranshaw Way, further north of Ranshaw Way, over to Front Street or Mahaffey Bridge Road. And I can understand that. Our concern is that that connection is kind of where the, the accident happened this winter. And so we're, we, we remain, our team continues to recommend that we eliminate the routes. They, the, the club may have representatives here the next couple readings. They couldn't make it tonight, or they may be reaching out via email. But we had a great conversation with them just today, and, and Michael and Guy a couple weeks ago, so.
Now's the time to open the public hearing regarding the new ordinance amendments. Anyone present wishing to speak in regards to that? Did we receive any communication from individuals to put on the record?
We did. We received an email this afternoon from Kathy Coleman that would be included.
In the record. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing at this time. This will be the first consideration of ordinance 2021-16, and ordinance amending Chapter seventy-five of North Liberty Code of Ordinances concerning permitted uses of snowmobiles within city limits. Anyone wish to establish the first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
I remember a meeting many years ago that we told them this day was coming. So, you know, it was just getting to be too hard, and people were starting to, you know, have difficulty with their lawns getting messed up, and along, all the businesses along that street and stuff. And I think that, you know, now, I mean, we've had, you know, an injury near, a bad accident, which that pole or thing is still messed up. That very well could have really hurt somebody badly. So, and I think that it's time to, they're just going to have to trailer from one side of town to the other.
Any other comments? Please take roll.
Wesson.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
I'm sorry, first consideration passes for affirmative and unopposed, one absent. To be fair about this particular thing, we'll add a second public hearing to this thing, so we don't accidentally cut them off from any comments they want to make. Next item is the third and final consideration for adoption of ordinance Number 2021-15, and ordinance amending Chapter forty-two of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish the third and final consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
I just want to say thank you all for the discussion and, and thought going into this, and for the community members who, you know, wrote in or stopped us while they seen this and talked to us about the hay crime ordinance, and that we are standing on something with teeth and not just a resolution with this, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a little to echo, and thanks for all the, the staff work, Mayor, your work, communications team's work on this, and obviously all of our community members here. I'm proud of our city that we're making another step in the right direction. So I know we had some very thoughtful conversations, and I'm just proud that we're making this decision tonight.
Thank you.
I think that there, you know, there's clearly differences of opinion on things, but the, the one difference is not that we're, this is the way we're going, and we're all united in that fact, so.
Anything else? Tracy, please.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Third and final consideration passes for affirmative and unopposed, one absent. Old business.
You going to bring up the League of Cities Conference?
Go ahead.
Um, the League of City Conference happened the day after our last city council meeting. Mayor Ryan and Brent and I were able to be there. We were like ships passing in the night, though. I don't think we really saw each other a whole lot. I think they were hiding from me. I, I was in a couple of sessions that I'll kind of type up some notes for. One of them was regarding the regional approaches to housing needs, and to kind of think about how homes equals economic development, to get our brains moving in that direction. And then I took part in an advancing racial equity portion that was led by the Iowa City Economic, or the Equality Director down there. She's been there with them for many, many, many years. So, again, I'll bring some notes together on that in the next week or so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. New business?
Just a reminder, tomorrow is the Liberty Homecoming Parade. Yes, I see some big eyes over there if you live near that area, but just continue to support our local high school here in North Liberty for that homecoming parade.
Anything else? Thank you. If not, we stand adjourned.